Six o'clock and I call this meeting to order if you would please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the liberty which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And each month we share a portion of our vision, mission, and belief statements and this month is vision and mission. Vision, engaging, empowering, educating everyone every day. The mission, the Bloomfield School District engages our students in learning, educates our students in academic and life skills, empowers our students for the future, and embraces everyone's differences every day. And now for the students of the month and we'll start with the elementary. Thank you everybody for coming out today. Yes, I appreciate you Steve, thank you very much. So I'm gonna start with fifth grade and basically I'm gonna read what the teachers wrote, why they chose that particular student. So I'm gonna start out with Dylan in fifth grade. Dylan, Lance, you here? That's okay, we're gonna read about it anyway. So Dylan is always asking questions, working hard in class, he's also very patient, kind to others, and always ready to help. Dylan occasionally offers a portion of his activity time to ensure that his homeroom classroom is clean at the end of the day. He loves to play football, is happy to include anyone who wants to throw the ball with him. Congratulations Dylan, very good. Alright Shayden, Monday. Nope, okay, I'm gonna go talk about her anyway. So Shayden is always working hard in the class, she's very determined and does not give up easily. She's also a kind and compassionate friend to her classmates. Congratulations Shayden, very good job. Thank you. Alright Will, Will Temple. Come on up bud. That's good to see somebody. Congratulations. So Will's a hardworking and compassionate student, he's always willing to help out any of his classmates. Will is one of those students who can be counted on to do the right thing when nobody is watching. Definition of character, congratulations Will, nice child. Draven, fourth grade. There, I honestly, I seen you. Come on up. Draven, how you doing? Draven is willing to give two hundred percent and, and let me try that again. Draven is willing to give two hundred percent daily in her work, she does not give up and is always willing to help others in any way that she can. I can always count on her for a smile, congratulations Draven. Alright, Henry Williams. Henry? Okay, we're still talking about him. Henry is a very sweet and kind, or Henry is very sweet and kind to others. I've never seen him treat others with anything but kindness and respect. He's a good listener and has a great sense of humor. He's a true joy to have in the class, congratulations Henry, appreciate you. Paisley. Hi Paisley. Gets along with his name, I hear by himself, I appreciate you coming up. Paisley is a sweet, Paisley is sweet and caring, she always gives her teacher hugs and is eager to help anyone who is needed. She has many friends and is great to have in class, congratulations for being awesome. Second grade, Mr. Hudson. Hi Hudson. How we going bud? Congratulations, it's awesome. Hudson is a kind and hardworking student. He takes his time, does his best work on his assignments, he talks with a kind voice and includes classmates in anything that he does. He listens during discussions and shares his thoughts and ideas. Hudson is a great role model to other students in second grade, congratulations Hudson. Emily. Emily? No Emily. Emily comes to school ready to learn and make friends, she is kind to others around them. And she is quick to help others, she listens and is active in classroom discussions. She does her work well and consistently shares new things she has learned, congratulations Emily. Uh first grade, Steven. Steven, Steven, Steven. Outstanding, I'll tell you what you're. Alright, I'm gonna tell you what your teacher said about the picture. There's, I can count on Steven to always do his best on everything he does. He's also very helpful to others, others in his class, let me try that again. I can't read today. I can count on Steven to always try his best in everything that he does. He's also very helpful to all the classmates, Steven is a great role model, we are lucky to have him in his class, I completely agree. So, Navarro. Mr. Navarro, there she is. How you doing? Fantastic. Sophia is such a kind person, she comes in every day with the best attitude and ready to work. Her positivity is contagious and infectious, infectious to all those around her. We are blessed to have her in our class, congratulations, keep being awesome. Alright Hannah Hutton. Ah, there's Hannah. New student here too, great to have you. Hannah is, Hannah is my newest student, she has worked really hard to catch up with her classmates and I'm proud of her determination and hard work. She works well with others and is a good friend and helper, congratulations Hannah. Mr. Silvers, I don't see Mr. Silvers in there. Alright. So they say that you're one of the most determined students that they had over the years of teaching. He never gives up and keeps pushing until he achieves his goals. This determination will take him far in life and I'm proud to be his teacher, congratulations. Alright, that's it, thank you everybody for coming in and supporting their kids and everything. Okay, now for the middle and high school.
Well. Our first student of the month today, or this evening, is Ms. Ellie Miller, come on up here Ellie. Alright. How old are you in? Sixth grade, alright. And some of the things that, had some questions here for Ellie and she answered them quite well. Her favorite food is fruit, any specific type of fruit? No, no really, just fruit in general?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, whatever mom's got in there, in the. Okay, I'm with that. Uh she is involved, let's see, on the cheer team, middle school FFA, and junior beta with that. Um let's see. Um her hobbies are horse riding, volleyball, and tennis. Do you show horses too?
Yeah.
Yeah. Alright, her favorite movie, she goes, I don't have one specific movie that I love, but if I had to put you on the spot. Any choice, just one out of the air? Horse movie, bunny movie? What she stuck to it is just like she knew. I wanna look at it, that's right. Uh and her favorite subject is math because her teacher, Mrs. O'Neil. Uh it's because of Mrs. O'Neil and how she is nice to all of her students, how she teaches. And what she likes most about Bloomfield Middle and High School, her friends, how nice everyone is, and her teachers. Well Ellie, congratulations, they thought the same of you and nominated you and voted for you, congratulations. Well, my next student of the month is not here. Uh if he was, he would, he would be, he would tower over me, he would be taller than I am. And that is Junior Blake Neal. Uh so Blake is not able to make it, but I will go through his um questions that he answered for me. Uh his favorite food, steak, he likes steak. He is involved in baseball, or excuse me, basketball, tennis, and golf. Uh his hobbies are, he enjoys playing sports, lifting weights, swimming, eating, and fishing. Alright, uh his favorite movie, and this is a classic, The Sandlot, it is a good one. Uh his favorite subject is history because he enjoys getting to learn important and interesting information about our country. Uh and what he likes most about Bloomfield Middle and High School are the teachers, so congratulations.
Well again, congratulations to all the students of the month and their families. And we invite you to stay for the rest of the meeting, but if you need to leave, we'll pause for just a second and then continue on.
One chance. Abby, what's, what's your favorite painting?
Okay, we'll continue on with the elementary recognitions. Uh do you have any elementary recognitions?
Me?
Yep.
Recognition for. Oh, any updates?
Yeah.
There's not really a lot going on, we got, we got dug out with snow, which that's great. Uh we're finally getting some consistency back in our lives, which is fantastic. Uh the other thing that we're really kinda focused on right now is an I read, we're four weeks out. Uh so the teacher's been working hard to get, uh the kids kinda used to that particular testing. So that way they're, they're doing like a sample test that the state provides along with the repository questions, which are old questions. Um and they kinda talk to it, talk to the students as they work through them. That way when they see it, they're not, there's, the anxiety level is hopefully a little bit lower. But sometimes that vocabulary can, can stop them and I don't want that to be the reason why they don't go for them, so. That's, that's what we've been busy doing.
Alright, thank you. And then the middle and high school.
Yeah, um so we got a few recognitions here, off the, the top here, one I recognize, um couple of our seniors, um for their welding aficionado there. Uh they were Jared Small and Calvin Myers, both competed at the uh state FFA welding competition. There were ninety-nine overall individuals and forty-nine teams of two. Uh Jared, uh Jared himself finished third overall out of ninety-nine. Um Calvin was in the top twenty, as a team they placed seventh out of forty-nine. Uh and in the district seven competition, uh they were the first place overall team. Uh and Calvin was first place and Jared was second, so really good and, and kudos to both those young men. In their efforts and, and, and working on the welding competition, so that speaks very well of them and the program. Uh also we had Invest Ed here, uh they did a fashion completion event on January fourteenth. Uh it's a little, usually we, we have them here in February, but they opened up the uh FAFSA earlier uh in the year, not, not Invest Ed did, the government did. And so uh they, we had them here earlier and uh it's a great, I mean it's, it's a great service. Uh cause they just walked right through every step. And so uh we, you know, share that out with families. Uh there will be another one at Ivy Tech, I'll get the date on that, but uh there'll be another free event where they can, uh parents and students can go to Ivy Tech. Sunday, college goes Sunday, and take care of that. Uh on the fifteenth, the day after that, our sophomores visited Hoosier Hills Career Center. Uh and got to see all the programs that are available to our students. Uh and uh this year, Hoosier Hills uh had a QR code and have a Google form for the application. It's made a lot, it's a lot, it's definitely more user friendly uh than what it has been in the old paper form. Uh and uh you know, we had almost a dozen students after that first two days after we visited and signed up. So uh looking for good numbers there for that. And then also that same day, we had Linton Beauty College um come here and speak to our sophomores and juniors. Um as you're aware, cause you guys have signed that contract. Um we have a contract, or contract with Linton Beauty College for cosmetology uh and barbering. Uh I can't think of the, they have a new program, sorry, I can't think of the, the, what it is, aesthetics or something like that. What is it?
And that's it.
That's it, thank you very much. And uh so, uh we've got several that have uh signed a. Tara does a great job, Tara Orman does a great job over there and we're, we're very fortunate because that's one program that Hoosier Hills does not have. Uh and then, you know, for us to partner with Linton Beauty College. Get our students to have those benefits, uh really helps out. So that was a good day, that Wednesday for them to come in. Um also some uh recognitions here athletic wise. Jenny Smither um was the individual sectional champion for the twenty twenty-five Hoosier Hills bowling. Uh and Malia Pishal was second. And then the girls team won the sectional and they uh individually and as a team advanced to the regional uh last weekend. So congratulations to Jenny and to Malia. Back, you know, since our December board meeting, uh our boys basketball team placed third at the first financial tournament in Terre Haute. Uh I still wanna call it the Wabash Valley, but it's, you know, they changed uh sponsorships there. Um Blake Neal, who was our student of the month, was um named to the all turning team and he was also named as the most outstanding player. He set the record for a, uh for scoring in one tournament. A hundred and thirty-two points is what he had for the games and uh you know, everything goes well next year. We'll probably set the record uh for the overall career record on that, hopefully. And then finally, rounding out, we had homecoming here last Saturday. Uh celebrate the year's ending in five. We had representatives of sixty-five, seventy-five, eighty-five, yes, ninety-five, oh five, and fifteen. Uh it was a really good night, Kristy Bladen and Macy Gillan did a really good job along with the students of, of student council, I should say. Of, you know, decorating, uh getting everything uh put together, the after party. Um and it was, it was a really good night. Uh the court was, uh Mary, Mary Nicholson was the princess and Leighton Graff was the prince. Uh Liz Welch was the queen and Calvin Myers was crowned king. So it was a good evening all around and we had a really good turnout uh for, for the team, so that's all I got.
Alright, thank you. And then you wanted to present the recognition?
Yes, um on behalf of the school district, um I wanted to take moment to express our deep gratitude to Marissa Hobson. For the four years of dedicated service to our school district. Uh her commitment to representing our community and advocating for the best interest of students, faculty, and staff. Will hopefully make a lasting impact. Um I believe she approached decisions with thoughtfulness, integrity, and a genuine desire to see our, our school thrive. So on behalf of the school district, I wanted to thank Marissa uh for her leadership time and unwavering support of our schools. So we appreciate all she's done and wish her the best in her next endeavors.
Alright, thank you. And seeing we have no one signed up for public comments, we'll go on to uh the oath of office for our new uh board member. Casey, did you memorize it?
I tried. She didn't know that was a requirement? You just repeat it for me. I state your name.
I, Casey Michael.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States of America.
Of the United States of America.
And the Constitution.
And the Constitution.
Of the state of Indiana.
And the state of Indiana.
And the laws of the United States.
And the laws of the United States.
And the state of Indiana.
And the state of Indiana.
I will faithfully execute.
I will faithfully execute.
The duties of my office.
The duties of my office.
As a member of this governing body.
As a member of the governing body.
So help me God.
So help me God.
It's like you said your vow. Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, and the next order of business is the creation of a new position and you want to explain a little bit about that?
Yes, so um one of the challenges that we face with uh some of our non-certified positions, including subpositions, is um keeping people under twenty-nine and a half hours. And so um our subs are only allowed to sub four days a week. Uh we have some subs that would like to sub more than that. And so trying to think of a creative approach to allow subs to um give us five days a week. Um just coming up a little bit more flexibility. A couple of things um that this position will emulate is we have contracted bus drivers. Um which means they're a ten ninety-nine employee and not a W two, so they're not, they don't get other benefits other than the pay that they're given. Uh we have aides that work four days a week and um some of them would like to sub. So they sub on a contracted basis um so that we don't go over the, the twenty-nine hours with them. And so this would just be taking those examples, creating a permanent subposition for the elementary and a permanent subposition for the middle high school that would be contracted. Um they would be paid for each day that they work out of the hundred and eighty-one contracted days. Um we do think it would be beneficial to have them here on the teacher workday. Um but if they miss a day, need to take a day off for any reason, that wouldn't be part of the contract. Um their responsibilities would be um classroom instruction, which would be implementing the lesson plans provided by the regular classroom teacher. Um and maintaining classroom management to foster a positive learning environment. Uh we would expect them to collaborate and communicate effectively with students, staff, and administrators. Um we would expect them to supervise students during class, transitions, lunch, recess, and other assigned duties. And support, um support the teachers. Uh we would expect their professional conduct to adhere to board policies and our staff handbook. Um and this, these positions would be the first um person assigned to an opening. So if a teacher calls off and nobody has called off yet, um then this teacher would be the first one selected. It's going to happen where almost every day we'll have the need of more than one sub in each building. And so for that second, third, fourth sub, whatever we need, it'll follow our traditional patterns of calling, um calling subs to try and fill those positions. In the extreme rare case that we would ever have a day where every single teacher was in the building on the same day. Then this permanent sub would do, uh would follow the principal's instructions on their expectations for their help during the day. Um and so that could be whatever duties the principal assigns, um such as um taking kids out, doing one-on-one testing, or individual um one-on-one help, support, uh small group support for a teacher. So I do think we would get a lot of use out of each of these positions and it would be um a cost neutral um position to add. Because we're using them as a sub, which we already need. The pay structure would be based on exactly what it says in the staff handbook. So if the staff handbook were ever to increase the sub rates, then this person would increase following those. So instead of naming a specific salary, it would be what is stated in the staff handbook.
Alright, do we have any questions or comments?
So is this like year-to-year position, will we need to rehire someone every year, is it continual?
Um I look at it as um once we hire somebody unless, like we'll have a contract um that I've written and shared in the executive con, content, but if there's ever a problem where we need to part ways, that, that spells it out. But i- if we get somebody that's really good and the principal likes, then I would like to keep them year after year until they decide to resign. Or if there's a factor that causes us to end the relationship, so that would be the plan.
And then I just wondered if, so if there was a day when the elementary had no teachers out but the high school had two, would, would that be an option if the two principals?
So I, I wouldn't wanna say no.
Yeah.
But I also know a lot of subs prefer to only do elementary. Or a lot of subs prefer to only do the older students.
Right.
So I think part of it would be dependent upon who they each hi, who the principals um hire and then their strength. So I wouldn't wanna limit it and say no.
Right.
Or, and I wouldn't wanna limit it and say this will happen every time, so.
Okay.
But it would be an option, yes.
Any other questions? Alright, seeing none, do I have a motion to approve?
I make a motion to approve.
And do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Alright, thank you. And then the next uh order of business is the minute, meeting minutes from the December nineteenth, twenty twenty-four regular session. Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
And a second?
All second.
All in favor? Alright, thank you. And then the meeting minutes for the January ninth, twenty twenty-five executive session, uh do I have a motion to approve?
We approve.
And a second?
All second.
All in favor? And then the meeting minutes for the January ninth, twenty twenty-five board reorg meeting, do I have a motion to approve?
I make a motion we approve.
And a second?
Second.
It was to the newest member. Uh all in favor? Alright, and then our last meeting on the January the ninth was our board of finance meeting, do I have a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion we approve.
And a second?
All second.
All in favor? Alright, thank you. And then the meeting minutes for the January sixteenth work session, do I have a motion to approve?
I make a motion we approve.
And a second?
All second.
All in favor? Okay, thank you. And then the meeting minutes for the January twenty-third special session, uh do I have a motion to approve?
All through.
Okay, and a second?
All second.
All in favor? Okay, and then the treasures report, uh do I have a motion to approve?
I make a motion we approve.
Okay, and a second?
All second.
Alright, all in favor? Thank you. And then our list of personnel, uh do I have a motion to approve?
Make a motion to approve.
And a second?
I, all second.
All in favor? Alright, thank you. And then our list of donations, uh we would like to thank the Bloomfield Tri-Cappa Sorority for a generous donation uh to the yearbook. And also a, a donation from the Tri-Cappa um to the prom committee. And then a donation from Shell Roofing uh to the Bloomfield Athletics, uh do we have a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion we approve.
And a second?
All second.
All in favor? Okay, thank you. And then we have a list of fundraisers, uh do we have a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion we approve.
And a second?
All second.
Alright, all in favor? Alright, and then the NJROTC overnight and out-of-state trip to Alabama for the national orienteering championship. Uh do I have a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve.
And a second?
All second.
All in favor? And then the NJROTC's overnight and out-of-state trip to Ohio for area fourteen drill championships, uh do I have a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion we approve.
All second.
And a second? Alright, thank you very much, all in favor? Alright. All right. Thank you very much. Now on to other business, the Neola Board Policy Updates. This is our first reading. I know we have submitted a few questions, corrections, typos already. Is there any additional questions or comments for tonight? And it will be next month that we'll vote on it. But this is just gives, there's usually a lot to read, so we give ourselves a couple of months to go through that, so. Anybody have any additional questions or comments or anything? Okay, all right then. And on to the Director's Report. And we invited Mr. Jonas Johnson tonight, give us an update on Custodial and Transportation Departments.
Dr. Bradbury asked me to write some stuff down, so. He's, he wants me to tell you how my day starts and everything and what we do when we get here and how it ends. Normally, my day starts at five-thirty in the morning. And this, we got bed weather. Then I'm on the phone with Scott. We're back and forth at four o'clock in the morning trying to figure out what to do. This January, I drove three hundred miles just checking roads. I mean, that's, that was on my pickup, not just the school cars. This has been bad January. I start my first pickup at six forty-five, rent a school at seven forty-five. Eighteen, I'm in Janice Parker's office. What's happened? What's changed? Because it's always changing. Transportation is constant. By nine, nine-thirty, Misty's been in my office or called me, or Jeff's called me, give me their updates, what's going on in their end. If I go help Jeff or head to the bus barn, something's happening down there. Hopefully by eleven-thirty, we'll be at the launch. By two forty-five, I'm back on the bus, do the afternoon route. By four-thirty, I'm usually back on the phone. Either parents called me, or custodians called me, or bus drivers called me, and we're working things out. In the custodial department, I have four eight-hour employees. They work two hundred and sixty days a year. I got four or five hour employees that work two hundred years, two hundred days a year. Then I got about six subs coming in and going all the time. The nighttime custodians, a lot of people don't realize what they have to cut. They got over sixty classrooms, twenty offices, three conference rooms, three gymnasiums, eight hallways, and thirty restrooms. Get done. And you cannot get everything done every night in every room. There's no way. Because most of the time, they only have twenty minutes in a classroom. Get through all this time. You know, that, that's sweeping the floor, picking, doing the trash, just everything that needs to be done. So you just pick and choose what's the worst. All night, hope something else is different. That's the way you have to do it. And the hats off to some of the teachers. They really keep their rooms clean. They come through, they get their trash, they bundle it up for you. Sometimes they'll leave a note on the door, skip my room, I'm good. That makes a big difference. A daytime custodian, Jeff, he had an eight-hour position. He spends four and a half hours just helping clean in the cafeterias. But he also cleans the agri, our old teacher room, sets up for all the ballgames, cafeterias, green and banquets, dances, whatever's going on. And he scrubs the elementary cafeteria every day. Because the look is, they make a mess. The transportation, we've had fourteen contractors. We're going to be down to eleven that can start next year. Get, get some routes out. Those eleven drivers are going to be covering six hundred and eighty-three miles a day. That's what they're supposed to cover. Granted, they may not cover every one of them. Some may not with them on that road. But they have to be ready to cover it if need to be. This was just a small increase of what we've been doing from past six years. It was the way it worked out. I'm not exact dollar amount, I'm not sure what it was, but it wasn't nearly what I figured it'd be. Misty and I started on this back in July, mapping all these routes out. We had to drive every road. Turn right, turn left. Get it down in every bit of the contracts. So every driver, when they made a bid, they could drive that route and they know what they had to cut. And that, it took some time. I had two or three companies call me, they wanted to map it out for me for about fifteen, seventeen thousand dollars a year, three-year contract. All our drivers had to go through two safety evacuation drills a year. For the kids to get off. And take distance from them. Every two years, the driver has to do their own physical performance test and then get out of the back of the bus by themselves. Up and down the steps, hit the brake pedals, check your switches. A lot of people, that's sort of silly. A few years ago, they had a driver, not sure exactly where he's that from, we had to use a walker to get on his school bus. The bus had a wreck. Him and a student died in that. Because students would not leave him. And that's really why these rules come effect. You have to do these. This is the way it is. A lot of people don't like the, what they call the right-hand pickup. Three years ago, we had a bad wreck out north and the northern part of the state killed three kids behind the bus. The state says, every state federal highway, you pick up on the right-hand side if you're out of the city limits. I did have our routes down to two less until I, I had to figure that in. And I had to add two routes just to cover the highways. Going in and out. It's just the way you had to do it. That increased a lot of miles. Janice Parker, my hat goes off to her. She does all the scheduling. We've got three cars, one van, nine mini buses, one new bus, many buses. Are you in the state of Indiana? It's at the shop getting letters put on now. And the cameras are putting on. So they should be coming in within next week, maybe three. That she schedules every one of them vehicles. I took this job, I asked her, I said, can you handle that for me? She took care of all the athletics. We had other people scheduling cars and stuff and buses. They get out there, my bus is gone. Somebody else already scheduled it out and they left first. So I said, I want one person done. She said she'd do it. And it's a night. Get a coach that goes out there. My bus wasn't sitting where I thought it'd be, so I just took it. These mini buses, some of them are fourteen passengers, some of them are twelve. If you take fourteen passenger and left the twelve and the other team, they can't haul all their kids on them. So that's one reason, you've got to be sure to get what bus you're assigned. All these games that's been postponed and everything. That means that bus had to be scrapped that day. Now we got four buses going up the next night, four o'clock. We have, we had to wait for contractors to get back here just to go. Got your game at six-thirty until six, because we can't get here at five. And that's just the way it works. Mini bus drivers, people don't realize what all they do. Misty gets here at six o'clock. Make sure every bus is ready to go. At six forty-five, we got two mini buses out on their own routes. At seven forty-five, they're up around the top of the hill, switching kids, one bus to the other. One bus goes to where they, and the other goes to land. But they just bring the air, switch them around and go. Most times, they're back here by nine o'clock. At ten-thirty, mini buses are going back where they did, pick up three schoolers to take them home. About eight o'clock, I get another driver that comes in, gets a car, and picks up a child out here in town, brings them in, that is, gets another child to take into Plymouth. They're back there by ten. At ten and forty-five, I got two drivers come in. They take Cougar Hills. They go up there, and they're back usually by two forty-five to their bouts. Then we have another two forty-five going out, pick up another kid to take them home. Like, it's just non-stop moving. And most of the time, they don't get back until four-thirty. It's just, most people just don't realize what all they are doing. We have the students, the IEPs, they have to have this transportation. Also, we have to provide it. So every time we have an IEP student, these routes change. Because some of them are behavioral, some of them are medical, and you can't combine them. Because you just can't take that chance. Medical student get hurt. Most of your preschoolers, you just want to put one in a seat because they'll pick on each other. Misty and Kay and them, they handle the little kids. Like, they'll get on you, okay, okay. I said, I don't know how you're doing it, but I can't do it. But that, that's just breakdown of what goes on. It's just domino effect if one thing happens. I pulled the girls from the bus barn, they're in lunch, they came in here, they see the prazl area. They're just not driving a bus, they're cleaning. They get that done, so they get to land. I mean, it's non-stop. I'll tell you, by four-thirty comes around, I'm tired. They are too, I'm sure. That's if everybody shows up, that's all.
How many, I was trying to think, how many nighttime, how many custodians do you have? Like nighttime and then daytime?
Really, Jeff is our own full-time daytime custodian. I fill in, Misty will come in and help fill in wherever we have to. At nighttime, we got one, two, three, four, six, seven at night. I think it was seven.
There's nine, including you?
Yeah.
Okay, just curious.
Good. Of that, we only have two at night that's full-time.
What hours do they work usually?
Uh, three to eleven, they're full-timers. Three to, some of them get done four and a half hours, some of them get done five. But most of them all come in around three, two-thirty, three. I'm pretty flexible with whenever they can get in here. Like on Fridays, you know, everybody cuts their families. Come here, get the trash, do what you need to do. Leave, come back Saturday and finish it up if you want. You know, they may want to go to the ballgame.
Yeah. Thank you very much for all your information and detail and a lot goes into what you do that we don't realize.
Anybody else want to hammer Jonas with questions?
It all sounds pretty exhausting to me.
Without Janice and Misty and Jeff, it'd be impossible. It's non-stop. Those are my main ones I can call, check on what's going on doing tonight.
If you listen to the radio, Jeff, we need paper towels. Jeff, we have a cleanup in pre-K. Jeff, this, Jeff, that. Yeah, all day long, Jeff.
Non-stop.
Yeah. And you'll see Jeff's legs going as fast as he can, not away, not back.
He's still a tall person.
All right, any other questions or comments?
Thank you.
All right, yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for your updating.
The transportation, anytime I call them, I mean, they've always been extremely responsive. I appreciate it. We're gonna have a meeting tomorrow.
All right. And then on to the Superintendent's Report.
So I wanted to point out the staff members of the week since our last board meeting. December twentieth, that week, was Macy Arford. January tenth was Nicole Kay. January seventeenth was Matt Bales. And last week was Sierra Kirkley. And, you know, as always, what you see on Facebook with their pictures that come out Friday mornings, I just want to thank Haabig Attorneys for their willingness to sponsor. They bring a gift card and bring a coffee mug for them. And it's really nice that they're willing to give up time every week to come and also willing to donate. Then another update, we have the bond and the renovations that we're working on. So I've been working with Performance Services to continue moving forward with our building renovations. In the past month, I had two different meetings where Mrs. Wright, Ms. Bonard, and Mr. Legrand were part of those meetings to get their input on the upgrades coming to their rooms. Where we're at at this point is the next time that, that you guys will work with Performance Services is they plan to come to the March Board Meeting and present Phase One, steps, timelines, and whatnot. Then I did want to take a moment and say January is School Board Appreciation Month. So you guys all saw a Facebook post. And so I just wanted to take a moment to recognize and express my appreciation to each of you. I know that serving on the school board's a tremendous responsibility. It requires time, effort, and a deep commitment to the success. I know you all focus on our students, on our staff, on our teachers, and our school community when you're making decisions. I know that you, your leadership is thoughtful when you're making decisions and you have a dedication to ensure that we're providing the best educational opportunities for our students. And so on behalf of our entire district, thank you for your service, your vision, and your passion for education. We truly appreciate all you do. And to celebrate you, we have a certificate. But to outdo what we did last year, we have a candy bar with it, you can trade. And to outdo that, we also have, we also have cupcakes for everybody that came to attend and stayed through the whole meeting. Kayla? Thank you, Kayla. Thank you, Darren. Thank you, Casey. This, just expect this for every meeting. Thank you, Lena. Thank you, Terry.
Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. And thank you, Chad.
Thank you.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you. You're welcome.
And do we have any board member comments and items for future agendas?
I'd like to comment on something here before we disembark tonight. I'd like to ask everybody here, everybody that might be watching, to just take a moment and remember the Graff and Hinkle family. They're, they're a big part of our community and, you know, they're active in a lot of things, sports. And they're just, they're fun people. And they're facing a pretty dark path right now with some things. And, and most, most people know what that is. But one good thing about being in a small town is when things like that go on, you know, we hurt for one another and we hold each other up and, and things of that nature. And so they've been tremendous to this school with their fundraising for Riley and different things and their willingness to always come and help with class parties or anything. I mean, they're just, they're really good folks. And so I'd just like to ask everybody to just take a moment of silence here to, to just reflect on that and, and think about them and this hard time they're facing.
Thank you. All right, any other comments? All right, and then future, future meetings is our next regular school board meeting will be February twenty-seventh at six P.M. here in the Media Center. And this meeting is adjourned, thank you.
And Darren, you guys went through that personnel there, I just wanted to say one thing. Kristy Webb is retiring. Kristy's just been with us for two years, but she started in with the middle school. She's been fantastic. And so. Uh, and so uh just want to wish her all the best and really appreciate the two years that she was with us. Fantastic job, and continues to do that throughout.
Yeah, thank you.
Also, I'm Glenn Drake, taking over, because her role went from an I E. here to a sub full-time in that.